Good afternoon, welcome everyone. I am. Sorry about that. Good afternoon, welcome everyone. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the City Council, Representative for the Sixth Council District, and Chairperson of the Economic and Community Development Committee. This afternoon, we will hear the following bills. Bill number 23-0352 and 23-0353. And just as a note, we canceled Bill number 22-0296 as a request of the sponsor. They're still working on some things, deadlines, and so on, and we will reschedule that at a date after the reposting again. So we're looking at sometime in June. In attendance today, we have, I just saw President Nick Mosby, so I guess he'll be back, but members of the committee. We have Mark Conway of the Fourth District, Antonio Glover of the Thirteenth District, and Councilwoman Odette Ramos of the Fourteenth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Robert Stokes of the Twelfth District. And we also have the Council President joining us, and also Representatives of the Office of the President, Erin DeGraffan-Reed, General Counsel, and Representatives from the Mayor's Office. Are you?
Law Department.
And you're from the, okay. Are you new?
I am, yes.
Oh, okay, well, when we get to that point, we will, you have to introduce yourself. First, we're gonna begin with Bill number 23-0352, City Property Renaming Playground and Pavilion at Alhambra. Did I say that name right? Park after Phyllis Gilmore, for the purpose of changing the name of the playground and pavilion at Alhambra Park located at 5200 Alhambra Avenue to the Phyllis Gilmore Playground and Pavilion. This bill was introduced on February 6, 2023. This bill was sponsored by Councilmember Conway. Councilmember Conway, comments, please.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for taking the opportunity to hear this bill first. This is an important bill for a number of reasons. And I think, you know, when we talk about our constituency being involved, when we talk about community leaders and the work that they do to help us, help our city, and be a part of the solution, Phyllis exemplifies that. Phyllis is the President of the Woodburn McCabe Neighborhood Association. She also serves as the Vice President of the York Road Partnership. She also serves as the Vice Chair of the Mayor's Public Safety Advisory Commission. She works with every single city agency. They all know her, and they know her well because she is always calling. She is always advocating for a community. She is a relentless fighter, a relentless convenor, and a valuable asset to the Fourth District and the Woodburn McCabe community and the York Road community. I am profoundly proud of her and really lucky to work with her, to see her passion, to see her focus, to see her commitment to the community. And the Woodburn McCabe community has had its ups and downs, and I would say it's had some of its highest ups under the leadership of Ms. Gilmore. So I'm really excited to have the opportunity to dedicate this playground and pavilion to her because I think it's important that folks have the opportunity to smell the flowers while they can still smell. And, you know, Phyllis is relatively young. I hope she's got another 50 years in her to help serve the community. But I think it's important that people in the community see and understand these really important people who contribute so much time, effort, money, passion, emotional energy into improving their neighborhoods. And Phyllis exemplifies that. So really look forward to getting to the bill, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is she here today?
Is Phyllis here? I don't see Phyllis here, unfortunately she couldn't make it.
Okay. So now we will hear agency reports. The City Solicitor's Office. Now you can introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Teresa Cummings from the Baltimore City Law Department. And the Law Department stands by the bill report.
Thank you. Favorable report, Planning Commission.
Sure. Hi, folks. Marie McSweeney Anderson, Northern District Planner. So at the regular meeting on March 16, the Planning Commission considered the City Council Bill, and it's the recommendation that it should be approved by City Council. Just a little bit of context because I can't help it. I've worked with Phyllis for almost a decade. I think each of us probably have a Ms. Phyllis in our community that we can think of. But a little bit of work that she's done just in Alhambra Park, and this isn't the limit of what she's done in the neighborhood. She has closed the street between the playground and the field for youth safety. Dozens of new trees have been planted. Annual maintenance and ongoing cleanliness occurs, and graffiti removal, and every year, it's the site of multiple community events hosted in support and partnership by the Woodburn McCabe Association. So again, to echo Councilman Conway, really wanna give folks their flowers while they're still here to enjoy them. Thanks.
Thank you for that favorable report and the extra history. Department of Recreation.
And Parks. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. I'm Jenny Morgan from Baltimore City Rec and Parks, and I'm here to happily endorse this legis, I can't even talk, legislation and that we support the renaming.
Thank you, Jenny, for that favorable report. Department of Transportation.
Madam Chair. Similar to the Department of Rec and Parks, we're in full support of this legislation and stand by our bill report. Thank you.
Thank you. And I wanna recognize Member of the Committee, John Bullock of the Ninth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Mara James, representing the Department of Finance. We stand by our report. We're not opposed to legislation. I would just also like to note that Ms. Gilmore participated in this year's fiscal 2024 results teams. That's part of the budget process. So she is involved, even with the Department of Finance, in many ways.
Awesome. Department of Baltimore Development Corporation.
Sallif Omar with Baltimore Development Corporation, and we have no objection to this bill.
Thank you. And what was your name again?
Sallif Omar.
Okay. And Department of Real Estate.
Good afternoon. Casey Callahan with the Department of Real Estate, and we stand in full support of this bill. And the comptroller would like me to echo his sentiment as a former representative that served Ms. Gilmore, that she is exactly who this park should be named after and a staple leader of that community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the committee? Okay. Is there anyone here to testify publicly on this bill? And seeing none, hearing none, we're going to go now online for public testimony? And do we see any hands raised? I see no hands raised for this bill. Any phone calls? And seeing none. Any comments or questions from the committee? Okay, the committee heard testimony and recommendations to support this bill. Is there a motion to move the bill?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
So moved by Conway and second by Glover. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Oh, okay. We move the bill? Gotcha. Yes. Chair Middleton, yes. John Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Mark Conway?
Yes.
Yes. Brian Dorsey, absent. Antonio Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. Odette Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. And Robert Stokes? Is a yes. This bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting. Thank you. And now we will move to the next bill, which is a voting session. For Bill number 23-0353, Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission, for the purpose of creating the Community Reinvestment and Resparations Commission to distribute certain funds in accordance with state law, establishing the purpose and duties of the commission, providing for the composition of the commission, requiring certain reports, defining certain terms, requiring certain individuals file certain financial disclosures, and generally relating to the Community Reinvestment Resparations Commission. This bill was introduced on February 6, 2023. The bill was sponsored by President Mosby. President Mosby, would you have any comments before we start our voting session?
No, I'd just like to thank the committee. I would like to thank the Council President Office and General Counsel DeGraffan-Wright, as well as Director Jen Haslam for working directly with the administration on this. It's been from the Health Department to obviously the Law Department, as well as the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. I think, as you can see from the amendment list, of equality amendments that I appreciate input from the administration and we're able to get to a solid ground in. What I will say about this particular bill, as I discussed and went over the history about why we here during the original hearing, is that this is not the end-all-be-all. However, this is a first step in the right direction. Thank you to the state and legislators in the state. Thank you for the advocacy of leaders of a beautiful struggle who not only pushed it on the state level, but has also worked with the administration and my office hand-to-hand to put us where we are today, to set up this as a standalone commission. Again, you know, when we talk about reparations, when we talk about reinvesting in communities that have been disproportionately impacted by policies shaped through racism and bigotry, and the foundation of what this country was as African-Americans, we were looked at as property, not as human beings. And when we talk about the advantages that have been given out to other folks, when we talk about the growth of our communities and leaving certain folks behind, this is a step in the right direction. Now, this particular bill coming out of Annapolis is specific to the inequalities associated with the war on drugs, particularly as relates to cannabis. But again, I think it's really important for this body to understand and know that we're setting up legislation that is not just specific to that policy, but that could be a catalyst or a vehicle for other policies from a state or federal perspective in the future as relates to reparations. So I'm excited for all the support. Excited to bring us here. And with that, Madam Chair, thank you so much.
Thank you. And just as a quick review to the committee, the Finance Department did not oppose, had no opposition. The Department of Human Resources had a favorable report. The Board of Ethics had no position. There was some questions with the Law Department, but I think they were discussed and worked out. I don't know if you, Elena, wanna add to that?
I'd just like to say that they didn't come out exactly as were discussed in our discussions with the President's Office. So I don't think we can support the second, let me see, the amendment that talks, that adds the language. Hold on, let me get my amendments out here. I just got them shortly before the hearing, so.
The committee, you do have the bills in front of you, right?
Yeah.
So Amendment Number Three, which.
Number Three, not Number Two?
No, Amendment Number Three.
Number Three.
Which puts in the language prioritize community-based organizations that have been historically underfunded. I just feel like that goes a little bit further than what the enabling legislation would require, would require of the city. So that's just my one concern about the amendments.
So your recommendation is saying that it goes too far? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So how would you say to pull that?
I think the original language that we had with, when Erin and I discussed it, which is similar to Amendment Number One, would be consistent with the state enabling legislation.
Is this the amendment where we wanted to say it was based in the community? Is that, I think that was from the Health Department.
It says prioritize community-based organizations that have been historically underfunded.
That's physically in the community, right? You were comfortable with that language?
I don't see physically anywhere in this language.
No, we took it out. We replaced it.
Okay.
With the language to say historically underfunded. The problem with saying it's based in the community, there's a tremendous amount of large, white-ran institutions that have utilized Baltimore City to buy property in East and West Baltimore. So basically, a lot of our large, community-based programming and nonprofits are in the community. So that would just give them another box to check. I think the intent behind this legislation was to try to identify organizations that were actually doing the work in communities, but traditionally are not funded as it relates to directly impacting the population that this, the bill was intended to impact.
I understand your concerns and appreciate them. I'm just commenting on the legal.
No, I understand. I mean, we would be willing to, it was the administration that came with the language. They wanted them to be based in the community. So we would be willing to pull that back. We just wanted to ensure that the organizations that this bill is intended to help and support and grow capacity in, that we were factoring that in and not lumping in everyone else like we normally do with policy like this.
Certainly, yeah. I think the language that we had initially would accomplish that purpose as well.
Again, it was the administration, and we were trying to work with the administration. With, I believe it was the Health Department. Erin, if you could speak specifically.
Yes, Council President. So, yes, that part of the Amendment Number Three was part of working with the Health Department's suggested amendment that the legislation encouraged the commission to, you know, in, as they're evaluating community organizations who are applying for these funds, that the commission would prioritize those who are really in the community, rather than, as Council President alluded to, some organizations who may be more national or larger and more well-funded. And rather than limited to, or worded such that they have a quote-unquote "physical presence," is what we discussed yesterday. We decided to just sort of tweak it to say, to be that those who are prioritized are historically underfunded. And my assessment, as far as the legal concern, was that the state law that we're modeling this after sets the parameters within which the city can act, and the city can direct the commission. And it seems to me that as we direct, and encourage the commission to target within those parameters, that it'd be, it would pass legal muster. But I think that, you know, if we need to have more conversation about that, that's something we can do.
Councilman Stokes?
I just wanna comment, and I agree with President Mosby. We done checked the box too much. The box get checked. We give a letter from the Community Association. And when I ride through my poor, black neighborhood, had nothing change. And I think we need to make this change on this particular amendment. Because when I ride through Broadway East and South Clifton Park and Dolly Park and Oliver, we get, they give out letters of support, but the community don't change, and they the ones do all the work. We can't keep repeating the same thing over and over and get the same results. Thank you.
And just to add, we, you know, as councilmembers, we do have a lot of small organizations that have been working for 10, 15, 20, 30 years within our communities that struggle within themselves as organizations. So this is another way to, you know, help, keep them helping in these neighborhoods. Councilman Conway?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also had some trouble wrapping my head around Amendment Number Five, which would require that three of the personnel have experienced being arrested or incarcerated related to cannabis charges. And I think the reason why I had a little bit of trouble there is particularly because I think this commission is positioned to have a broader scope when we talk about reparations. And I think that's a great thing. And then I think, two, when trying to sort of fill those three members, when we're looking at a 17-member board, and each council member chooses their own person, there's no one that has the ability to necessarily pick those three people. So it's, you essentially have to require some sort of coordination amongst councilmembers. So councilmembers have to say, look, you're gonna pick the person who has been formally arrested. I think that's a pretty hard one to figure out. So I have some reservations about Amendment Number Five.
We're going to, well, first, first, you have no additional, you have no problems with Number Three?
I do not.
So what, what we're going to do is, out of all the amendments, we're gonna table Number Five because there is some, I think we do agree there needs to be more conversation about Number Five. So we're gonna table that to have more conversation. Any other members have any questions or comments about any of the other? I'll start with Councilmember Bullock.
Oh, yeah, just really quickly, just to follow up on Councilmember Conway's comment. What I'll say, I don't have a problem with the formerly incarcerated arrested individuals. I don't think we'd have a problem finding folks in our district and our communities. I think one point that I might wanna make is possibly when we're looking at incarcerated related to cannabis charges or charged for other illegal drugs. I think some may have a question around the other illegal drugs, given that we're just talking about this as being a cannabis-related fund. So I think that's something we need to have more conversation about as we go forward.
Noted. President Mosby?
Yes, so I appreciate that, Chairman Conway, as well as Councilman Bullock. We talked about this prior to the hearing, totally agree. Again, this was a late addition from the administration that they thought was important. We understood and knew kinda, I guess, the motivation behind it, but definitely understand and see the concern. So I think this is something that we could potentially work on, second reader, if not, come back and see if there's a way to achieve ultimately what the Health Department wants to achieve with that suggestion.
Okay. And Councilmember Ramos?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question back on Amendment, oh, thank you. Excuse me. Just another question back on Amendment Number Three. The, Mr. Petrow, could you clarify what the objection is on this language?
Certainly.
Because going too far, I don't, I just wanna be clear about what that means.
Well, the, let me get the exact language from the enabling legislation. Enabling legislation directs what this, the city's role is supposed to be in this effort. And in 50, it says, after a lot of other discussion about how the comptroller is going to determine the distribution of funds, it says, "Subject to the limitations in subsection A6, each county shall adopt a law establishing the purpose for which money received from the fund may be used." If you go back to section 6A, it says, "Funding of community-based initiatives intended to benefit low-income communities, funding community-based initiatives that serve communities proportionally harmed by cannabis prohibition and enforcement and related administrative expenses." So, I mean, in my mind, it would be better, I think it goes, this is a very broad grant of authority. And I actually think it's worse to narrow it down because you can always provide for those communities that the amendment would serve, but by narrowing the scope of the fund, use of the funds, you are maybe missing out on other opportunities as well. So that's why I thought it really went further than the state intended it to be, to be, you know, to allow the funds to be used in a broader way.
Yeah, thank you for that clarity. I just, I agree with my colleagues about several organizations that typically miss out on opportunities for funding for various reasons. So just wanted to put that out there. I agree with my colleagues. I just wanted that clarity. Also, just wanted to point out Amendment Number Four should say on page four and not page three. So if that can be changed for second reader, it's minor, but just to make it correct. Amendment Number Four should say on page four and not page three.
Okay. Is that duly noted?
Yes, that's noted. I know that Councilman Ramos had a conversation with staff in our office.
I brought it up earlier.
Who's made sure that we're making that change.
Okay. Any other questions on any of the other amendments?
Madam Chair, if I may, from the Department of Finance.
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify our position. On the initial bill, we deferred to law in terms of the concerns about the authority for the commission to appropriate funds. But Finance is opposed to legislation that would limit the city's authority to spend, to spend the funding. And so I just wanted to make sure that was on the record, that to limit the authority in that way, especially considering some of our concerns with the current economic environment around increased state funding requirements and ARPA money that may be going out, that is gonna be expiring soon, that there are community-based organizations that are receiving support from the city in that way, that the city now may not be able to, could use these funds to support, but would have to go to the commission for that.
Any questions? Okay. Duly noted, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, one other comment?
Yes, Law Department.
The Law Department, I forgot to include this in my previous comments, that the Law Department also recommends that the word "direct" be defined, since it is a fairly broad meaning word. And in this context, we feel it means carrying out the organizing, energizing, and supervising of the program.
Which amendment was that?
To define the word "direct" to mean carry out the organizing, energizing, and supervising of the funds.
Which amendment number?
It was a Law Department amendment. I'm sorry, it didn't appear on that. It was in response to the latest set of amendments. Just for your consideration.
Just to clarify, Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
To the Law Department. You're saying we just wanna define in the bill what "direct" means? Yeah. And I guess, do you have proposed language to do so?
Yes.
Have you provided it to us?
No, because I.
No, no problem. She says she does not. She says she does not. Could you just speak us? Yeah, could you talk it through it right now? Yeah.
We would just define the word "direct" to mean carry out the organizing, energizing, and supervising of the funds.
Yeah. Looking at the GC, I take that as a friendly amendment. So to the committee, I think the Law Department would like to define "direct" in the bill as a sponsor to the committee. I take it as a friendly amendment.
And you'll submit that to the committee in writing before the next council meeting?
Yes, I can do it this afternoon.
Okay. Any other comments on this? Yes, Health Department.
Thank you. Just getting up since, I don't have a microphone, but Julia Roche, Legislative Affairs Director at the Baltimore City Health Department. I am accompanied today by my colleague, Charles Jackson. He is our Health Equity Director. Thank you so much for letting us comment on this bill and be part of this really important hearing. I just wanted to offer, I know there were maybe some questions about some of the amendments that the Health Department had recommended. We had a really productive meeting with the Council President's Office, so thank you so much for that. But in particular, I hear that there might be some concerns about including members who either have a history of incarceration or arrest around marijuana, but in addition to marijuana, other illicit drugs. If there are any questions, perhaps there's time for us to speak to that?
So, there sounds, there sounds like, well, we'll table this-
Okay.
-because it sounds like there should, can be some more dialogue before the next council meeting, and we could add amendments on the floor during second reader. Does that work with the committee? Okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions on the, on President Mosby's submission of, so it, so we're going to basically vote on all except number five. And we do have, you do have one more amendment from me, really on behalf of Councilmember Burnett, which is online, just so people know if you have any questions about this. But basically, it's, these amendments give us as a council a chance to also add a member and be a part of the process in putting a member on the commission. Does anyone have any questions about this? Yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have, just to clarify, the original bill does already have that we can appoint a person, but this amendment just clarifies the process. And, you know, as we've had it in other bills, like the PAB and, and the OIG. I guess my question is, I mean, I think that this amendment is fine. I guess it goes back to the conversation around Amendment Five, which this is actually embedded in that section, where the bill says 17 members, 16 will be appointed by the mayor, and then this, this, or, excuse me, 16 will be appointed by the city council, which is, or recommended by the city council, which is what Councilwoman Burnett has here. And then of those members, we have to look at section being, line 15 on page four of the original bill, look at, a member must be, that's where the conversation around whether or not somebody who's been arrested gets included. So I guess, maybe this is a question for Mr. President, are the conversations going to be around expanding the number of members, or just that, for instance, the 14th District, we would have to make sure that I have somebody who's been incarcerated? How's that, I guess that's what, Councilman, you were getting towards?
That's part of, that was part of his concern. Right now, it said 17, not 16.
Excuse me, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I think part of his concern, which was spot on, is, you know, how can you control, and we deal with this all the time, how can you control who council member in councilman one versus three versus seven wants to appoint? So the idea is that there are 17, there are 17 slots. There are only 14 district council members. So one solution would be making the three that are left over require that they, the mayor slot, my slot, the other slot, that they are, they have a certain level of characteristics. I think the other part of Councilman, Chairman Conway's concern is, what are those characteristics? You know, this is supposed to be much broader, if we're setting it up for the future, than just cannabis. It's the same concern that I had when it was introduced. So, you know, that's what we look to work with the Law Department, to try to figure out, you know, those three remaining slots, how we can do it in a way which factors in the disproportionate amount of harm that have been placed on our communities, through individuals have been impacted by the war on drugs, but maybe also develop ways of bringing other characteristics to identify that. And I think in working with the Health Department, as well as Chairman Conway, we can get there by, by Monday. So, so again, you, you wouldn't be required to go under one of those characteristics, because, again, there are 17 slots, there are only 14 district council members.
I see what you're saying. But there could also be part of the conversation, either expanding that number?
I think 17 is a pretty, pretty large number for, you know, for particularly of the sides, starting out. So my suggestion wouldn't be to expand. It would be work with what we currently have as 17 members.
I got you. Okay, okay.
And it doesn't preclude you from utilizing those same characteristics to identify the folks in your district-
Right.
-to appoint as well, but it doesn't require that any makeup of the council, as it relates to district members, utilize that characteristic to determine who their appointee is.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
And at this point, I want to, want you to open up Councilman Burnett, if he has any more comments to add on this amendment. He's not a part of the committee, but he did structure with this amendment. Hello, Councilman Burnett. I'm sure you've been listening.
Yeah, I, I didn't have anything to add. I, I agree with the Council President, that that's probably the best approach, is to work it out through the remaining three. I think that's a great idea.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any comments on the amendments that are in front of us? So we're going to vote on all of the President's amendments, except for number five. And I think we can do that in, as a group. Is that correct? Okay.
The only one thing, I just want to make sure, in full transparency, Madam Chair, is I believe the Office of Equity and Civil Rights does have some concerns, and I just think it's fair that we hear those concerns prior to us voting or taking any additional action.
Duly noted. And now let's hear from the Director of Equity and Civil Rights.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Dana Peterson Moore. I'm the city's Chief Equity Officer and the Director of the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak briefly. I want to begin by, you know, saying that we are in support of the spirit of this bill. And we don't just say that we support it with our words, we've supported it with our, or the spirit of it with our actions, by holding conferences on cannabis equity and what it means for the city, and, and sort of the background of how we got to where we are. So we think this is a very, very, very important and, you know, potentially game-changing piece of legislation. We do have some concerns about how it is currently crafted. I've shared, I think when the first time I came for the hearing, you know, I shared some thoughts, and I've had some, lots of really good conversations, you know, offline, before today, and even today, Mr. President had the kindness to answer my phone call. But here's, here's our concerns. One is the implementation and where this would be housed. We think it should not be a standalone commission. The Office of Equity and Civil Rights believes that this is a commission that would perfectly align with the work that it's already doing in the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. It is a, as I shared earlier today, it's a unique alignment of purpose of our office, mission of our office, and the work of our office, and the ability of our office to stand up a commission just like this. I heard someone mention the PAB, the Police Accountability Board, which all of us worked together for a long time to create, as well as the Women's Commission, which, you know, every time I say the words "Women's Commission," I have to thank Council Vice President Middleton for encouraging us to bring it back, and it is back. And it took a while, it took a year. The PAB took a long time. So we, we had asked that there be an opportunity to offer amendments that would have this commission housed within the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. We were also concerned about the size of the commission. I think initially it started at 30 people. I think it's down to 17 or 19. It's still a big commission, given the purpose of this commission and the work that it's going to be doing. We think that's too large. I had suggested during our call yesterday that it be more manageable if it were nine or 11. Also, when you were trying to staff a commission with people with certain demographics, I think it's hard, and I just was hearing the debate back and forth about who is it that's going to make sure that there are three people with certain demographic characteristics? And I think it's a mistake, and I know that we're going to have to talk about that more, to have that responsibility solely vested in the office of the mayor or the office of the city council president. There's got to be a better way so that that responsibility is equally shared. We also have a concern about the timeline. I talked about this a little bit earlier today. There is a concern about the actual doing, the making of the thing. It's going to take a while. It's going to take more than 30 days to actually stand up this commission, just the very process of developing the application that potential members would have to fill out. You know, it's one thing to create the application, but you got to vet it. You know, it needs to be a document that everyone here agrees on, and also the administration, because this is a shared effort. That alone can take a while, and then you've got to get it out on the street and give people time to respond, and then you have to vet the responses and the respondents. So that process alone is probably a 60 to 90-day effort. So being aware of the timeline is, is critical. There's also, it would be beneficial to know where these funds are going to be housed. I have recommended or suggested that the funds, when they do come in, go to the Civic Fund and actually establish and give life to the equity fund that has been on, that this body established several years ago, but it has never been used, never been utilized, because it's, there's no funds. There's no money in the equity fund, and this is a opportunity that, a conservative suggestion or thought was that it would generate about $20 million for the city of Baltimore, for the specific purpose of creating equity and reparations, which is what reparations are. It's creating an equitable response to a wrong of longstanding. So I wanted an opportunity to talk about that. I think, hold on just a second. And I should introduce Tyler, Tyler Schnella, our new, I think it's only been like three days, four days, five days, four days, equity legislative analyst, brand new, and has done an amazing job already. So, anything else? He thinks we're good, so we're good. That's it. Thank you.
I think I met Tyler in the state. Yes.
A familiar face.
Yes.
And we're, we're hiring. Not here to give a, a sales pitch, but-
Do your commercial.
Yeah, we're hiring, we're growing, we're, we're trying to make all of this happen, and we're going to be looking for another equity legislative analyst. So, thank you.
Well, thank you for stepping up and wanting, your agency wanting to be a part of this. I know you have done an excellent job with the Women's Commission, and ultimately, the decision is with the mayor, for the most part. But thank you for stepping up and supporting this very important cause and initiative, and, and working with the council from the very beginning. Any comments with, yes?
You're doing a great job, but I'm gonna go back and I'm gonna say this again. We are checking the box again. That's all we doing is checking the box. That's got to change. We still checking the box. Check the box. Thank you.
Can I disagree?
Go ahead, you can make a comment.
Okay, I guess I, I do disagree, and, and Councilman, you know, I, I hold you in such high regard, but then, but then I think about when I go to bed at 2:00 in the morning, and I get up at 5:00, and there's a lot that's happening. We're not just checking the boxes. And, and it's not just this legislation. I mean, there's so much that's happening in the city that is moving the city forward. We don't all agree, and I'm pointing at you, Councilman, because we don't all agree, but we're all working hard for the best interests of the city of Baltimore. And the fact that this legislation, and, you know, Mr. Love is back behind me, and we don't all get along all the time either, but I have great respect, great regard for this document. Now, this is Tyler's memo. That too, for that too, but for the legislation. And I don't feel like we're checking boxes. I feel like we're moving government forward, and government is hard. You know, you know, I grew up in a different environment. I grew up in the military. It's different. When an order is issued, the action happens. Government is different, because we have constituents. We all have constituents, and demographics, and parties, and people that we have to be mindful of. And then there's the mon, money, there's public funds. It's just a different process, but I feel like we're moving forward, we're making progress. We're doing more than checking boxes.
Director, I know you work hard, but when I ride around in Dolly Park, and South Clifton Park, and, and Oliver, and, and those communities in Midway, we don't check the box long enough. This sound like, to me, we checking the box again, and that's how I feel. We are checking the box again, because we going back with some, naming some of the same organizations that done, has done nothing in some of the communities that I represent.
So it sounds to me like you and I need to have a public debate, separate and apart from what we're doing here today.
I'm not going to change how I feel. We checking the box.
One, one day at a time. Okay, now back to the voting. So we're first going to vote on the President's amendments, except for number five. Are we, Amendment Number Five, we are tabling. Is there a motion to move those amendments?
Move. Second.
So moved by Glover, second by Conway. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. And then we also have the one single amendment by the Chair on behalf of Councilmember Burnett. Is there a motion to move that amendment? So moved?
Second.
So moved by Ramos, and second by Conway.
No, Bullock. Bullock.
Oh, I'm sorry. There I go again with, second by Bullock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Okay, both amendments, sections, all the amendments are moved, except for number, Amendment Five of the President's Office. Is there a motion to move those favorable amendments? Was that Conway, and second by Glover? We're taking the vote. Favorable with amendments, Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Conway?
Yes.
Yes. Dorsey absent. Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. And Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. And this bill, as amended, as amended, will be moved to second reader at the next council meeting, and I want to thank everyone attending today, today's hearing. This voting session is adjourned. Have a good rest of the day.